All right. Well, please, let's first welcome our candidates for CD5, Katie Young Yaroslavsky and Sam Yebri. Please give them a round of applause. See how nice that is? You get a round of applause before you've even said anything. But no applause, though, during the debate. So we're going to cover four subject areas in this. The four subject areas are homelessness, sustainability, economic recovery, and public safety. Right now, you've been told that those are going to be the four areas, but you've not been told the specific questions that I'm going to pose to you. So here are the ground rules. First, I will pose an introductory question to you. You will each have two and a half minutes to answer that question. Following that, I'll pose a question on each of the subject matter areas that I've just mentioned. You will have three minutes each to answer that question. And then there will be a final question, and again, you will have three minutes to answer that question. If there are questions from the audience, please again write them down on cards, and they will be collected and given to me, and we can deal with them during Q and A. So we're going to switch back and forth, since there are only two of you, so we'll do that. All right, so let's move straight into the first question. And you know, you've seen a preview of what this is, so I'm sure you may have prepared for it. But please tell us the one formative experience of your life that has led you to run for this position, and that's two and a half minutes each. Sam, why don't you go first?
Sure. First of all, thank you, everyone. My name is Sam Yebri. I want to thank David, Mary, Rachel, Adam, the entire L.A. Business Council community for convening, not a debate, but really, this is a job interview. The residents of the 5th Council District will be hiring someone to steer this city from the brink of decline and demise and back to a place that is going to be livable and a great place for all of our families. The formative experience for me is being a refugee and being a father of four kids. I'm running for Los Angeles City Council because the city that I love, the city that welcomed me and my immigrant family and enabled us to live the American dream, the city where I've started a business and I'm raising these four kids, is broken, and the bureaucrats that broke it are incapable of fixing it. I went to three local public schools in the district, and then went to Yale and USC for law school. When I came back to Los Angeles, I threw myself into doing everything I could to be of service in this city. I was a pro bono lawyer representing the most vulnerable in our city, tenants and workers and refugees, individuals with disabilities. I served on some of the most important nonprofits in the city, like Bet Sedic and Jewish Community Foundation and the Anti-Defamation League. I started my own law firm 12 years ago. I'm a small business owner, like many folks in here, just down the street in Century City. My landlord is here in 18 Watt, and we're paying our rent every month, despite the moratorium in place, so everyone should be aware of that. I was a city commissioner under Mayor Virgo for four years. I served on the Citywide Gun Violence Prevention Task Force. I went through LAPD Citizens Academy because public safety is really important to me as a father of young children. I served the Westwood community on the board of our local library. Meanwhile, my wife and I and our four kids have watched with sadness and then with horror as our city declined on every single issue: corruption, crime, poverty, and the issue of our time, homelessness. And that decline is a result of the lack of leadership at the city and county level. There's been an unending musical chairs of state legislators, their staffers, their family members. Instead of common sense, we see ideology. Instead of innovation and creativity, we see inertia and bureaucracy. Instead of integrity and transparency, we see corruption and nepotism. And that's why I'm running for Los Angeles City Council, to fight for the vibrant, safe city that we all deserve. And I'm running a very different type of campaign. We're not going hand in hand to the special interests with businesses before the city who run the city. We're going to the people of the 5th District, and we raise more money.
Sam, we need to stop.
Okay. Thank you.
Katie, two and a half minutes.
Thanks, David, and thanks, LABC, for putting this together. It's really wonderful to be here in person after so long, to see so many familiar faces, and have a chance to talk about our future and where we're going to go together. I'm a climate attorney. I'm a regional policymaker, and I'm a mom to three young kids. And I'm running for City Council because I'm deeply frustrated at the state of our city. I want L.A., my hometown, to be a place where we and our kids and their kids can thrive. But it doesn't feel like that place right now, does it? There's a huge gulf between where we are and where we need to be. And the way we're going to bridge that gulf is through effective, ethical, and proven people stepping into these seats of power. I've spent six years working for L.A. County Supervisor Sheila Kuehl, making policies and programs on behalf of L.A. County's 10 million residents. It's been an incredible experience to see just how much one can do when the right people are in seats of power. That's why I'm running. I spent a decade in the private sector, first as a land use attorney at Latham and Watkins. There's some former colleagues here, which is awesome. And then I spent a few years as the general counsel at a climate change nonprofit downtown. My experiences have led me to the point where I'm incredibly well qualified to do the actual work of being a L.A. City Council member. That's why I'm running. The three areas that I want to focus on on the council are homelessness, prevention, and rapid compassionate effective solutions to get people off the streets who are currently on the street. Constituent services, hugely important. It's going to be a big priority for me, not only for residents, but also for businesses. Constituent services, how we improve the quality of life for all Angelenos. And then a third priority, given my background, not surprisingly, is around climate resilience and making sure we make Los Angeles a climate leader and make us ready for the next 100 years with a warming planet. I'm a problem solver. I know how to get things done. It's why I have the support of people like Congresswoman Karen Bass, State Senator Ben Allen, and Henry Stern, my boss, Sheila Kuehl, Hillary Norton, who's here from the California Transportation Commission, Kathleen Brown, another infrastructure geek who also happens to be the former state treasurer, and hundreds of community leaders who know me to be someone who's an effective problem solver. I'm running for this seat because I want to do the work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to the first of our subject areas, which is homelessness and housing. And I'm going to repeat this because it bears repeating. The LABC Institute's recent homelessness poll showed that 94% of voters view homelessness as a serious or a very serious problem, and that they are frustrated with the lack of progress on addressing the homelessness issue. I'd like to get your thoughts and how you believe we should be addressing this crisis. That's the first part of the question. The second part of the question is this. Just last month, L.A. City Council adopted an update to its housing element that sets strategies for the city to meet its mandated regional housing needs assessment. The plan identified the gap of nearly 250,000 units needed to fill the gulf between current zoning projections and the goal of roughly half a million new units by 2029. We've not been able to solve the affordable housing issue. What do you think you're bringing to the table in order to deal with the homelessness issue and the housing shortage? And what do you think can be done in CD5 in order to mitigate this problem? Katie, why don't you go first?
Two and a half minutes to answer that.
Actually, three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. So on the homelessness, thank you, yes. On the homelessness front, I think there are four key areas where we need to be focused more. The first is on prevention. Every single day, on average, 207 people are taken off the streets and connected to housing and services. The problem is that every single day, on average, 227 people become homeless, two-thirds for the very first time. And so that's unsustainable, right? We have more people becoming homeless every day than we're getting off the streets. So we need to focus on homelessness prevention, and we know how to do it because we have been doing it. We just need to scale it up. We need to connect people with social workers before they become unhoused. It's a lot more effective and a lot more humane and cost-effective to connect, keep people housed than to wait until they fall into homelessness before we connect them to housing and services. And we know who those target populations are because they're overrepresented in the homeless population. It's transition age youth aging out of the foster care system. It's people coming out of jail. It's battered spouses who just got a restraining order. There's tons and tons of categories of people, and we know how to reach them because they're already accessing government services. So that's one priority. The second, people who are already on the streets. We need to treat this with the urgency that the situation demands. We need an all-above strategy: tiny homes, safe camping, adaptive reuse of hotels and motels and commercial buildings. We have a lot of half-vacant commercial buildings because of COVID. The city should partner with the state to buy up buildings and convert them for housing. We have money. The state has given us a windfall of money, and we should be going out like crazy and buying it up. I'm a land use attorney by background with a background in real estate. We need to be speculators right now in the market and aggressively going after properties. Third, mental health, public health, addiction services are all county. The city does the housing. The county and the city need to be working closely together. They're not right now. It's totally ad hoc. And so you see that breakdown playing out on our streets every single day. My first call, my first day in office, is going to be to the two supervisors' offices that overlap with CD5 to set up weekly staff meetings to go over each and every encampment, each and every person on the streets, and figure out what our strategy is going to be to get them off the streets. And then fourth, there is some percentage of the homeless population that has real mental illness and real addiction, and we don't have the tools right now to help them off the streets. They're not going to make rational decisions, and so we need state action to allow us to help them, and we need a place to put them. We need beds. We used to send them to state institutions. We decided that was a bad idea. It was. We were supposed to create community centers, community-based healing. We didn't do that. We used to send them to jail. We don't do that anymore. So they're literally living and dying on our streets. We need beds, and we need some state law changes that will allow us to help people. In terms of housing, like I said, I'm a land use lawyer. CD5 is one of the most job-rich centers in our entire city. Outside of downtown L.A., it's the most.
You have to stop.
Oh, sorry. We're going to build a lot of affordable and workforce housing near those job centers.
I'm glad we stopped.
I didn't see you at all, so I'm sorry.
So when I walk around the neighborhoods of the 5th Council District, I see people that are withering away and suffering on the streets and think we all are more than frustrated. We're angry. And let's be clear. The city and the county spend $2 billion a year, and the problem has gotten 60% worse in the last five years. And the cities and the counties spending this money without transparency, accountability, really any common sense or urgency. I go out and speak to homeless service providers, and what they tell me, our approach is it's like trying to treat someone who's dying from hypothermia by letting them sit in the cold while we build brand-new hospitals. That's insanity. Prop Triple H promised us 10,000 units within five years. We've gotten 1,000 units built in that period. But during that same period of time, 6,000 Angelenos who are experiencing homelessness have died in our streets. So I'm going to do three things that no one else in the CD5 race has been willing to say, do, and commit to agree to do. First, Prop Triple H is a failure. Before we pour more money into building more housing, we have to fix our system. It can cost $500,000, $600,000, $700,000, and take six years to build supportive housing. I've done the hard work of building housing on the board of a nonprofit called ETA, which fills housing for adults with special needs. We're building 64 units on Pico and Rexford, and it took us three years to get our entitlements. That's insanity. We have to streamline and make these things easier to do and bring down the carrying costs, the soft costs, and bring together all the tax credits to make these things possible. Second thing I'm willing to do is to say the county has failed us on mental health. The majority of the people who are suffering on the streets, their problems will not be solved by housing alone. Women suffering from domestic violence issues, post-traumatic stress from veterans, foster care LGBTQ youth, the list goes on, and addiction and mental health. We have to pivot dollars into interim housing solutions. I join LABC in doing that work. More money into nonprofits. Reevaluate our relationship with LSA. More mental health beds and facilities. And we have to change our mental health laws. The Land and Order Act is 50 years out of date. We have to save people and conserve them before they're an imminent threat to themselves or someone else, which is the standard. We've got to save people before they die on the streets. That will be my guiding principle. Five people a day are dying on the streets in the city of Los Angeles every single day. And our city's refusal to pivot, the city's refusal to say the county's not working, is why people are dying. And third, I'm the only candidate's race who's willing to enforce our laws with respect to anti-camping. The city of Los Angeles finally passed an ordinance called 4118, which made it illegal to sit, lie, or sleep next to a hydrant, next to a business, a home, a school, a park, a daycare center. While we move towards the goal of getting everyone indoors as soon as possible, as fast and cheaply as possible, we have to maintain public health standards and public safety standards on our streets. We have a duty to everyone in this room, everyone in the city of Los Angeles, housed or unhoused, to make sure our public spaces are clean, safe, and accessible. And I'm the only candidate in the CD5 race who's willing to enforce these rules.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next area, which is sustainability. L.A.'s environmental ambitions and many successes are indisputable. We have the Green New Deal, LA 100, Operation Next, Hyperion 2035. We're the number-one solar city in America. We now have more electric vehicles and commercial electric vehicle chargers than any other city in the United States. These actions have helped protect our environment, create jobs, and attract capital to L.A. Yet, we suffer the ravages of climate change with Angelenos experiencing extreme heat, wildfires, poor air quality, drought. You've both identified the environment as an important issue in your campaign. But these issues go well beyond the 5th District and require buy-in from a variety of different interests, possibly international, from business to labor to the environmental justice community. How do you plan to work with these disparate groups to pass significant measures for the protection of the environment? And can you give us an example of when you've actually done so? Why don't you take this one?
Sure. Thank you, David. And a lot of those achievements are a result of the work that you've done in this area, and I want to applaud you and thank you and recognize you for your leadership, as well as LABC for being one of these environmentally progressive-minded business organizations in the city. I'll agree with you that the city's done a lot of great progress. And of course, the climate emergency is imperative, and every policy decision we make as policymakers must be made through the lens of how it's going to affect our planet. What I want to disagree with you is there's a lot of rhetoric. There's a lot of promises and bold press releases. And I'm going to agree with my colleagues here, Kevin and Marina and Teddy, that there's a lot of rhetoric, but not enough action. There's a lot of areas the city of L.A. has failed us. The biggest and what's most infuriating is the failure to enforce our basic environmental laws. And this is personal for me. I'm a father of four kids, one of whom, my young son, has severe asthma. And despite all the environmentalists who've been running the city for a long time, the county and the state, Los Angeles continues to have the worst air quality of any major city in this country. And by some accounts, every day by walking the streets, we breathe four cigarettes every single day. So I'll give you one imminent threat, what's an example that's critical for us and where the city has failed us and where I have led. The city of Los Angeles is built on oil wells. The 5th Council District has more oil wells than any district in Los Angeles. And at the intersection of Pico and Doheen, there's 57 oil and gas wells pumping oil and gas under our homes and schools and houses of worship every single day. And on Saturday night at 8:03 PM, there was an oil spill. You heard me right. An oil spill in the heart of L.A. in 2021, and my future constituents were calling me saying, what can we do? My team had to scramble to call the five different agencies: the Petroleum Administration, the Fire Department, AQMD, and the list goes on. And no one was working on the weekends. And our city is just broken, and this could have been prevented. So the residents of the 5th Council District sued the city in 1999. And ultimately, there's a settlement agreement. The city agreed to do CQ environmental reviews every five years, but the city's waived it. And I've joined appeals to fight that, and I've testified and sent letters. I've been quoting the L.A. Times about this issue for nearly a decade. The city promises an enforcement inspection ordinance, and they still have not drafted one, let alone implemented one. It's an example of our city just failing to do its job to keep our planet and our community safe. Obviously, there's a lot of other issues in this field, too, that are really important. Getting cars off the road is one of the biggest things that we can do to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We have to build more housing near transit, especially workforce and affordable. $9 billion investment is coming to the 5th Council District with respect to the Purple Line. I'm going to build a lot of housing near there. It's imperative for us. We're going to plant more trees because that's going to help our quality of life, our environment, incentivize telecommuting. And then we're going to be a world leader in electrification and solar distribution. Makes it easier for residential folks to install solar. That is a big part of our future, and we're going to be leading on this issue under my leadership at City Council.
Thank you. Three minutes, Katie.
So the question is about what we've personally done to bring stakeholders together to solve something big around sustainability, yeah?
Principally, yeah.
So I'm an environmental attorney by background. I spent six years in Sheila Kuehl's office leading on really big regional initiatives. When we came into office, I was the only environmental deputy. None of the supervisors even had thought to have environmentally focused staffs. By the time I left to go on leave in September, each supervisor had teams of at least two or three people. And that shows you how much work we did at the county, the largest county in the country by population, 10 million people, moving us from doing nothing around sustainability regionally to leading on it. I had a chance to do a lot of really important things that are personally meaningful to me and will have and continue to have incredible impacts for Angelenos for generations to come. But I want to talk about one in particular. Over a period of about three years, beginning in 2015, I led the development, negotiation, and ultimate adoption by the L.A. County Board of Supervisors and the voters of L.A. County with 70% of the vote of Measure W. It's known as the Safe Clean Water Program, and you probably voted for it. It's creating a more resilient, climate-resilient Los Angeles for generations to come. It's providing an ongoing funding stream of about $300 million every single year for stormwater capture, so we're not so reliant on imported water. It's going to do it in a way that also greens our community by building new parks and restoring wetlands. And it directs that money towards communities in particular that have long been under-resourced for open space and clean water. And I was able to do it by bringing together a bunch of different stakeholders. Lots of you are actually in this room today. Hillary Norton and I got to know each other by-- well, I've known you for a decade or two. But we negotiated with BizFed when you were the chair of BizFed, brought together the business communities of Los Angeles, labor, hundreds of environmental groups, public health organizations, community members, 85 of L.A. County's 88 cities, wrangling them. Imagine that. Weekly meetings, sometimes twice-weekly meetings with the mayor of L.A.'s office, Long Beach. I know how to build coalition because it's what I've been doing with my career. We had an iterative, inclusive process where we brought people in early, and we allowed people to take pieces of the program and run with it. That's how you get buy-in for really hard things, right? You give people credit and give them the opportunity to feel ownership of it. And we managed-- I mean, you were part of this as well, David-- we managed to have no funded opposition. Most people don't even know what stormwater is. But we had 70% of L.A. County voters supporting it. And the way I describe Measure W is like this. When you fly into L.A. now, you come over L.A., it's gray, right? In a generation or two, it's going to be green. And it's going to be green because of Measure W and the local money we've generated that we're going to leverage against state dollars and federal dollars to transform our region. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, the next subject area is economic development and recovery. So a recent Yelp economic report listed L.A. as the U.S. city with the most business closures since the pandemic started, with women and minority-owned businesses getting hit the hardest. The report revealed that there have been 15,000 business closures across L.A. County, with half of those expected to be permanent. So this is a two-part question. One, what do you think needs to be done to enable our businesses to recover and to thrive? And how would you go about doing that? The second part of the question is L.A. has seen several major companies move their headquarters out of the city or out of the state over the past several years. What do you think is causing this? And how can we make the city more attractive for job-generating businesses? So two-part question. Why don't you go first on this one?
Sure. So our economy isn't going to recover until we can get our hands around COVID, right? The uncertainties, the constant closings and reopenings. People are leaving Los Angeles. It's not an easy time to have a business here, right? And so one of the best ways we, in government, can work on fixing that is bringing COVID to an end as quickly as possible. And of course, we're part of a global ecosystem. But to the extent we can encourage people to get vaccinated and then boosted, that's really important. We also need to make sure that as we emerge from this, we have an economy that works for everybody. We talk about building back better. We need to be doing that locally, too. It shouldn't be so hard to live in Los Angeles, and we need to pay people enough to live here. And we need to support businesses that are willing to do that. to live here. And we need to support businesses that are willing to do that. I think one of the things we need to be focused on, too, as we emerge, is being really clear and specific on where we want to prioritize for growth. So, this is LABC. A huge part of what LABC does is advocate for a transition to a green economy. And I think those of us in local government in positions of power should be using that power to really push the city to move in those directions and really making sure we're entering into contracts that support sustainable businesses, that we're using our power on various boards and oversight of boards like LADWP and Metro and the AQMD, Regional Air Quality Board, that we're pushing for electrification and moving us in the direction we need to be moving so that LA is a more appealing place for businesses and for people. The second part of your question is about how do we make it a more business-friendly city? And I think the best way we can do that is by providing more housing, more workforce housing, more affordable housing, making it easier for people who are employers to attract and retain people. UCLA is one of the largest employers in the region, I think the fifth largest. It's the largest employer in Council District Five. And I know that it's an ongoing challenge to attract top talent here because of how expensive it is to live here. And if we could, in partnership with UCLA and the community groups around UCLA, figure out how to build some housing for the people who work there and students. You know, UCLA, Westwood Village, is the second most expensive zip code for renters in the country. I went to UCLA for law school, and I'm still paying off my law school debt. And it's not the tuition, it's the housing. So, a huge thing we need to do is around housing. And then, just very quickly, you know, we need to upgrade our infrastructure. Businesses need to be able to rely on reliable water infrastructure and energy infrastructure. Right now, when there's a fire up in the mountains or high winds, our power goes out. That's not a sustainable system. And as someone who's worked in infrastructure and has deep expertise in infrastructure, I'm going to be leading on this and pushing on this at DWP and our various agencies over which we have direct and indirect authority.
Thank you.
We all agree that COVID has decimated businesses, big and small, but let's be honest here, the policies in place that the same old folks, the city and the county have been advancing for years are the cause of the demise of our economy locally, right? The small businesses are being choked by fees and fines and rules and delays. And I know that because I'm a small business owner. I pay workers' comp, payroll tax, I pay my commercial rent, I pay that gross receipts tax every February 28th that's tied to gross receipts, and I could be losing money and still have to pay business tax. And what just business owners expect when they pay that tax is world-class city services, and that's not what we're getting. And I've, we mentioned Westwood Village, and I want to use that as a case study. I've spent a lot of time going door-to-door to 40 businesses in Westwood Village, which is close to my home, close to my heart, where I spent a lot of time as a kid going to those businesses. There's now a 50% availability rate, 42% commercial vacancy rate, according to CoStar. This used to be the gem of LA, and no disrespect to Jennifer and Chancellor Block here, this is a failure of leadership at the city. There's a lot of reasons here. There's a specific plan that's out of date. There's neighbors and landlords that don't get along. But this is where a council member can lead. This is the job of a council member, to make sure there's not a 50% vacancy rate in the heart of Los Angeles in 2021. And I'm going to make helping small businesses a priority. Small businesses are the engine of our economy. And what the small businesses are telling me is that we need to leverage the big employers. Google is coming in and taking a 500,000-square-foot footprint at the West Side Pavilion, the heart of the village. We have UCLA, the largest employer, Cedars, Fox. We got to make ecosystems, tech corridors. We got to create this culture that this is where you want to start a business and scale it. And then we got to make it easier to open a business, grow it. Restaurants have to get their permits for alfresco dining, for liquor licenses, easier. It shouldn't take six months for you to put a basic signage on your storefront, and that's what it takes right now. You shouldn't have to pay thousands of dollars and wait months and months for the city to return a stinking phone call. That's how the city is failing us, and that's why Yelp deems Los Angeles the hardest place for small businesses to operate. And I don't want to live in a city where Pico and Sepulveda and La Brea and Fairfax and Beverly is half vacant. And what other small businesses are telling me is that it's not just the city and the lack of services. It's crime and it's homelessness. And if Los Angeles is not a safe city, every other adjective that we want to describe ourselves, sustainable, equitable, healthy, green, goes out the window. If we're not a safe city for families, for neighborhoods, and for businesses, all is lost. And I'm the only candidate who's willing to say that and do the hard work of making sure that we keep our neighborhoods safe. And of course, we got to bring in investment, infrastructure, housing. These are all part of the path forward. And I look forward to the opportunity to lead.
Thank you. Thanks very much. We'll move on to the next area. And again, if there are questions, please write them on cards, and LABC folks will pick them up. So the next area is public safety. So, issues of public safety have become an increasing concern due to drastic increases in crime trends. There is a palpable sense of insecurity in the city. There are a range of theories about the reasons for the spike in crime. While some want to increase penalties for certain crimes and increase police funding, others want to reallocate funding to programs that provide community support and address the root causes of criminal behavior. So, two-part question. One, where do you stand on this issue? And two, in recent months, CD5 has experienced an uptick in robberies, shootings, and other crimes, particularly in the Melrose Avenue area. How do you plan to ensure the safety of the residents of your district? Why don't you, I think you went first the last time. Am I right?
I did.
I think it's my turn. Thank you, David. I appreciate that question. It's an important one, and this is the primary job of city government, is to keep every Angelino in every neighborhood safe. There's no other level of government that will do it. As a father, this is important to me. I have four young kids. There is no other issue that's more important to me. And I've spent a decade now working on these issues. I lead our public safety committee in our local neighborhood association. I served on a gun violence prevention task force for the city of Los Angeles. I went through an 11-week LAPD Citizens Academy to understand policing in the city. And let's be clear, there's not just an uptick in crime in CD5. It has now been the epicenter for the last two months of crime. The Melrose area, which is part of the Wilshire Division of LAPD, there was one homicide in 2019. There have been 13 in 2021, a 1,200% increase. And that doesn't even include the 80% of shootings, 70% uptick in car thefts. Homicide citywide is up 50%. And these are real people. Jaren Bradford, a 27-year-old aspiring musician working at the Shoe Palace on Melrose, was shot and killed by a 16-year-old with a gun. So to answer your question, the root causes, it's everything. It's an explosion of guns on our streets, including these 3D-printed guns and these ghost guns. I know these are passionate issues for our city attorney candidates as well. We have to implement these new ordinance that's in place. We have to get to the, we have to understand that crime is leading to the sense that Los Angeles is lawless. And there's other aspects of crime, too. There's a surge in car racing and street racing deaths and pedestrian deaths. There's a surge in hate crimes throughout the city. It's time for us to understand and speak clearly that we have, there's causes of this, and part of it is also decisions made by our leaders. I think it is immensely irresponsible for us to defund and demonize police officers at the same time that we ask them to do everything under the sun. LAPD officers get 140,000 phone calls a year related to homelessness. And we expect them to deal with those issues and deal with the explosion of guns and gangs. It's time for us to reprioritize police work. Police officers who are willing to run into the line of fire for our families need to focus only on core police work, the guns and the gangs that are making us less safe every single day. And it's time for other city employees to deal with the mental health, the 5150, the homelessness calls, film production, DOP lines, traffic stops, noise complaints, all the things that are taking up the time. And then, the Controller of Los Angeles, Ron Galperin, issued a great report that the City Council just ignored. There are 500 jobs that are being currently performed by LAPD officers in the office. We have only 9,500 police officers. We used to have 10,000. 500 of them are now dealing with subpoenas and paperwork and taking reports. Let's get those folks out there patrolling. And that's ultimately the job of the City Council, is to make our neighborhood safe as soon as possible. I want to make sure, I also want to make sure police officers do their work the right way. And we can probably be proud of our police. That's done through better recruiting, training, accountability, and oversight. And I believe that we can do both, keep our neighborhood safe and improve how our city is policed every single day.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think we need, I know we need, a well-funded police department that's responsive to the needs of our community, that's funded, staffed, and able to go do the work that they've been hired to do, that they went to the academy to do. We know that crime is up, not just in LA, but nationally, in every major city. There's a lot of reasons for that. I've spent a lot of time talking to public safety experts, and they say that anybody who says that there's one reason why crime is up is full of it. There's a bunch of different reasons, right? And what we can do as elected leaders is make sure that we're adequately resourcing public safety. We need officers to be focused on the work of police work, right? So they need to be on the same beat, developing relationships with community. Right now, they're not doing that. They're understaffed, and so they're being pulled in a bunch of different directions. They don't have the chance to develop those relationships that allow them to solve crime more efficiently and prevent crime. As Sam said, we also need to relook at what we're asking officers to do. It doesn't make sense to have armed officers responding to homelessness calls all the time. A huge amount of their work right now is around mental health, homeless services. And there are others who are better trained and better equipped to be doing that work, and it'll free them up to go do police work. At the same time, public safety is also about LA Fire Department and our Emergency Management Department. You know, there's a whole umbrella when we talk about public safety, and all of those agencies and departments need to be adequately funded, too. Public safety is also broader than just crime, right? It's about, it's about safe routes for kids to school. I have three little kids, and I walk my son to school every day across Los Angeles Boulevard. And there's a little plaque above the intersection where a pedestrian died crossing that street. And that's one of the places, that's one of the things that's squarely within the purview of a council office, council member, is having a relationship with LADOT and making sure that our intersections are safe. It sounds silly, but it's, you know, lots of people die every year by getting hit by cars. So, in the long term, you talked about investing in communities. That's a really important piece of this, too. We can't just default back knee-jerk to our tough-on-crime stance of the 90s. It didn't work. It resulted in a generation of people, mostly people of color, going to jail, and we have broken systems that we need to fix. The best way to do that is to invest in our communities. And not just the Fifth District. We are all connected to each other. The city of Los Angeles is one of 88 cities regionally. Council District Five touches West Hollywood and Beverly Hills and Culver City. And so what happens in one part of the city or in even another city impacts what happens in terms of public safety in the Fifth. A lot of the people who are coming committing crimes in the Fifth, the really visible ones that Sam talked about, those people don't live in the Fifth. And the root causes that are leading them to come to the Fifth to commit crime, we can resolve through government, through investments, through job training programs, through workforce development, through mentorship and good education and affordable housing.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, the five minutes is for the entire program or for the entire program, including Q and A? Ariel. Okay, so this, it's all Ariel's fault. I don't know, I don't know how she managed to mess with the clocks, but she did that. Okay. So this last question, you know what it is because you heard it posted the others. So one minute each, right? I want to hear an honest regret about a failure in your life and what you learned from it.
I was in the bathroom when this was asked last time. Do you want to go first?
I'm happy to go first.
Well, maybe that was your regret.
That was my regret, as it turns out.
So like many of you, I come from the private sector. I've spent now almost 16 years litigating, cases to trial, cases to appellate courts. And sometimes when you take a case and you have a client, work it up, you get into the facts, you just believe it, right? You believe your client's going to do the great job. Even in a deposition testimony, he or she did do the best job. You believe that, you know, something, how things are just going to work out, right? And I've had cases like that, too, where I just thought, well, just end up winning. You know, the facts might not be on our side, or the law might not be, but whether it's my talent or I believe in the system, and I've lost cases, heartbreaking cases. And I think that's the moment that we're in the city of Los Angeles. Well-intentioned people built Measure H at the county level, Prop Triple H at the city level, and they still believe it. They think that things are just more money, just let's, more time, let's triple down with this new sales tax on real estate. Let's triple down. It's just going to work. Give us 15 more years. We're going to spend 20, all the housing in the world. It's going to get fixed. And sometimes you just got to admit, it's not going to work out. I should have taken a settlement in that case perhaps, and now we got to pivot. And if we don't pivot, the city's just not going to be livable anymore.
But, yep, so the question is, point to one failure in your life that you've regretted and what you learned from it, in one minute.
Yeah, so I, and no disrespect to my former colleagues at Latham. I started my career, I went to Berkeley and then UCLA for law school, and I went straight into private practice. I spent four and a half years at Latham and Watkins practicing land use law. And I learned a lot. I grew up, I grew up there, and I made some lifelong friends. I learned how to do legal writing and how to dress up and present myself. But I stayed for four and a half years, and I wish I'd left earlier. And I pivoted towards, I did a CORO fellowship in public affairs. I was the oldest person in the program. I turned 30 as a CORO fellow. And it was a transformative experience for me. It provided me with the network and the connections to go do the public service work I wanted to do. And I've been doing that work for the last 11 years. And it's, and I'll be doing that work no matter what happens, whether I win this seat and become the next council member for the Fifth or find other ways to engage meaningfully in this work. But I think that those four years could have been better spent, learning about public policy, doing the work, politics, and not being in the private practice.
That's it. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna, we've, I think, we have, now we have five minutes, we had five minutes, five minutes ago. She's messing with my mind on purpose, I think. Okay, we're going to move through these quickly. So, first question. Would you accept contributions from law enforcement? And what does police accountability mean to you? Why don't you go first on this?
So I'm not accepting money from law enforcement. I respect what they do deeply, but I think it's really important to have some distance between them because one of the things I'm interested in doing is, is working hard to reform the department. And I want them to be partners and collaborators, but I don't want there to be any appearance of impropriety. There was a second part of that question?
What does police accountability mean to you?
Look, I think the police are public servants, too. And everybody deserves to feel safe and protected by the police. And we know that that's not the case for segments of our population. And so I think the police need to be accountable to all of us because all of us are owed that, that fiduciary duty. And so accountability means them owning the places where they need to grow. And as a council member, I'll work with them to find ways to make sure that they're responsive to the needs of all of us and not just some of us.
So police accountability means to me that the right people do the right jobs in the right way. We recruit and train the right people. We make sure that they have the jobs that are focused on core police work, guns and gangs in this moment. And if they break the rules, they're held accountable, just like any other city employee. So we do that better with, through better recruiting, training, accountability, oversight. And here's a statistic. Every year, the city of Los Angeles pays out $50 million in settlements and verdicts related to police misconduct. That's not okay. And our city attorney, I think, are these great people that are running for the city, are going to root that out in the prevention side. And sometimes we're going to litigate these cases, too, if we don't have to settle these out. But all of us deserve to feel safe in every neighborhood, and police is a necessary partner in that work. In terms of this question of law enforcement money, again, I value police officers. I value unions of every kind. I'm a supporter of labor. I support law enforcement. We made a decision that we're going to run a very different type of campaign. We're not taking money from anyone who has business before the city council. We're not going hat-in-hand to the developers, the business community, the LLCs, the PACs. We are taking money from individuals only. We're running a campaign that no one has ever run the city before, and we've raised more money, even so with those restrictions, than any first-time candidate for city council in the history of the city. Almost 2,500 individuals have donated money to us, and we haven't had to go to those people and those forces and those entities that are often influencing government. So we're really proud of that. And that's why we've brought, built this unprecedented coalition of supporters from progressives like Holly Mitchell, moderates like Joe Buscino, legends like Henry Waxman, because we are the candidate that's going to bring the change that we need to save the city from demise.
All right, next question. CD5 has a very organized constituency that is very resistant to development despite having zoned transit access and jobs that make it well-suited for density. How do you propose to augment housing production in the district? Why don't you go first on this, the UK?
We have a massive housing crisis. It was imperative that we build housing. We have this golden opportunity with a $9 billion investment in public transportation in the heart of our district, Beverly Hills, Century City, Westwood Village, and the VA, for us to build housing so people can actually use these stations, right? What's the point of this $9 billion investment if people can't walk and use the station? So I'm committed to building transit-oriented housing on the commercial corridors. We're still living in the consequences of really bad policies from the 80s, Prop U that downzoned all these commercial corridors. There's no reason why Santa Monica and Pico are these one-story, aging, commercial corridors. They should be vibrant. We need life. We need housing. We need pedestrians on these streets. It'll help the business community, help our neighborhoods. And what I tell the constituencies is, just look at homelessness. People are living, withering away, and dying on your front lawns and your favorite businesses and in your parks because we haven't built enough housing. It's either that, or we build supportive housing, workforce housing, and affordable housing in our neighborhoods. And I'm especially interested in workforce housing because a lot of folks make more than $40,000 a year, which is one of the thresholds for affordable housing that's getting built through the TOC program. But they don't make a couple hundred thousand dollars, and they can't afford to live near UCLA and Westwood, right? So we have to, that's that missing middle that they say. That's that middle income. And no one at the city, at the county, no one's really doing enough to build that. And I'm going to find the incentives and the programs, and we're going to prioritize those types of projects. And we're going to wrangle the constituents who fight development and developers who want to build it and get those projects built.
Thank you. Katie?
So, as a land use attorney in a former life and someone who's very interested in planning, one of the things about this job that's most exciting to me is the opportunity to do actual, real, proactive community planning. So many of our communities in Council District Five haven't actually updated the plans by which land use decisions are made in a generation or two. Century City, for example, has this thing called a specific plan that governs development that hasn't been updated since the 60s. Westwood Village has a 30, 40-year-old plan. And so the reason why it doesn't feel like what's happening with development is coherent is because it's not. And a lot of it's really ugly and ad hoc, and it doesn't create the sorts of vibrant, healthy communities that all of us want to live in. And so there's a real opportunity, and that's one of the things that I'm really excited about, is going through the process with community and a bunch of different stakeholders to upgrade, update those plans so that we know where development's going to go. It takes away the threat of corruption because it's clear what's going to go where. And then we, as a community and the private sector, we build that. And we create vibrant, healthy, green communities where people can live near where they work. We make sure there's affordability baked in. There's equitable communities, too. Am I done, or am I good?
Yeah.
All right, I'll stop.
All right, final question, and then we'll wrap up, right? So, quick, you know, maybe 30 seconds on this. On an average night in Los Angeles, there are only 250 police cars on patrol in LA, only two to three in West LA. How would you change this?
We need a well-funded, well-staffed police department. And that means we need more officers going through the academy and out on our streets. And they need to be well-trained and keeping us all safe. And having officers on the street is one way that we can help suppress crime. And so, that's one way. And then the other way is through having really strong communities and community-based organizations, getting people back on the streets, creating vibrancy on our neighborhoods again. Crime goes down when there's a lot of people out and about. So, as we recover from COVID, I think some of it's going to take care of itself. But we also need to make sure we're adequately funding the police department.
Yeah, no, this needs more urgency than that. We need to protect neighborhoods right now. So Paul, what Paul Kreutz did to his credit is he paid overtime out of his discretionary budget and got cops on the streets in Melrose, and the murders stopped. So I'm going to do that when crime spikes, God forbid in Westwood. We're going to spend every dollar of our discretionary budget to get cops on the streets. And if it requires overtime, so be it. The middle approach is to get cops out of the, out of the office and get them patrolling. Ron Galperin can say, these are 500 cops with guns that are trained. Let's get them on the streets. And then long-term, we got to restructure the entire responsibilities in the core of LAPD. We can't wait for a couple of years, a couple, you know, a couple of classes of recruits to join. We're down roughly 9430, 9450 police officers in the city of four-plus-million people. So we need some short-term, midterm, and long-term strategies. And if it's a question of funding, let's figure out where that funding comes from. But right now, it's just about a leadership. We have to keep people safe in every single neighborhood of Los Angeles.
All right. Thank you. I think, I think that wraps it up. Let's please have a round of applause for our candidates.